All right, we'll begin and call our meeting to order. All rise with flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jody Thompson, board member.
Jamie Bailey, board member.
Bernadette Bauer, board member.
Ryan Cristelli, board member. Chris Nesmit, superintendent.
Our K E staff, the law fliger staff, Jeff Monroe staff.
Emily Nelson, staff.
Julie Moore, staff.
Lisa Arms, staff.
Sarah Hamilton. Yes, yes, yes.
Derek Smith, staff.
At this time, we would probably need a motion for Stephanie's absence and for Candace. What do you got?
Should need a motion for Candace, just for Stephanie. And maybe
Maybe Delaney.
For good order, Delaney.
I'll move that we excuse Delaney and Stephanie from tonight's meeting.
I'll second it. There's been a motion made in second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of the board meeting minutes for April 27, 2022.
I move for the approval of board meeting minutes for April 27, 2022.
Been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, we have letters to hire, to retire.
Yes, so I'll begin on the school board. Please accept this letter as my notice of retirement from my position as a parent educator for credit retrieval at Alma High School. My last day of work will be June 15th. My retirement will take effect August 31st, 2022. I've enjoyed working with and learning from my fellow employees for the last 21 years. I'm looking forward to my retirement. I'll miss being a part of this team. Thank you. Susan Kosky. This letter is to recommend that Patricia Ryder will be approved to fill the Spanish speaking student support specialist position for the 2022-23 school year, seven-hour position. Start date is approximately last week in August pending calendar approval. Patricia has a wide range of experience that includes work as a student success navigator, Spanish teacher, and certified interpretation. Interview committee considers Patricia well qualified and recommends recommends her wholeheartedly for this position, respectfully, William A. Opeler. To superintendent Nesmit, Alma School Board members. This letter is to recommend that Crystal Stanley be approved to fill the elementary special education lab 1.0 teaching position for the 2020-22-23 school year. We had two qualified applicants apply for this position. However, the interview interview team consisting of Deb Schaefer, Colleen Means, Melissa Crisp, and Stacy Rocky unanimously selected Crystal as our top candidate. Crystal has been a special education teacher for the last six and a half years working preschool through high school levels. She has proponent for inclusion for years prior to her teaching career, working as a volunteer for the A R C of Grace Harbor while at Grace Harbor College. She promoted Special Olympic activities in Grace Harbor, Liberty High School, and now Montesano, initiating the Young Athletes Program for children under eight. She is passionate about inclusion and working to promote U D L so that all students can learn together. The team felt that Crystal's beliefs best fit the Alma District initiatives and will help us move toward in their implementation. The team is excited about this candidate and requests that the school board approve the hiring of Crystal Stanley for the 2022-23 school year. Signed, Stacy Rocky, Special Services Director. Then the last one will be, we're letting you know that I'll be retiring from the school district. At the end of the year, will not be returning in the fall. Signed, Sue Stewart from Alma Elementary School Library. So we wanted to thank our retirements of both Ms. Stewart and Ms. Kosky on the time that they committed to our district and the investment they've made toward.
Yes, thank you. Okay, consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second this.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In discussion items, in a dashboard study session, Mr. Smith.
Good evening. I have been talking about this the whole school year, so excited to present this information. I have 32 slides and I'm going to try to give you a really good overview but not take 32 minutes, so I'm going to go through faster than that. Run over here and just minimize this for a quick second. When when Chris first came into the district, even before he started, he met with all the Advent team one-on-one and for my meeting, I very distinctly remember two direct questions that he asked when he met with me. And I'm going to give you both those questions. This one at the beginning, you get to hear the second one at the end of the presentation. But the first question he asked me is, what are you doing with your data? Candace is the brand new boss and I'm scrambling thinking, we've got lots of data. We have data in Skyward, a lot of data in Skyward. We have our local assessments and so I'm scrambling trying to, you know, share all of the ways that we have data. And it wasn't until, it was probably a few months where I finally got the full picture of where he was going with this. And the idea of bringing all of our, where I really saw he was asking, where are you bringing all your data together where you can see it in multiple layers? And where you can see it all in one location and you can, we can start looking at it, not just current year, but over time. So that's why I have this, bringing all of the data together and starting to to build that out. And going back to the last slide, that's why I say other possible sources, because not only did we take what we currently had in place, but then we started to discuss other things that we could pull in and look at, for example, the S E L data that was collected this year. We also grew iReady beyond just the elementary and started doing those assessments for the sixth through eighth grade as well. So now I'm going to take you into what we're using, the frontline, it was formerly, it's Forecast, Five Lab. And now it's been merged with Frontline, so we use both terms there. I'm not going to actually take you into the live data, first and foremost, probably because I do a little paranoia that if there's some dashboards that can will give student names and more specific student information in public media, I don't really want a chance to be throwing that up on the screen. So we're not going to go into live data, but I'm going to give you a lot of snapshots about what it looks like in this environment. First is just the district overview. And when you look at those numbers, you might think that those are a little high for the student count per grade level. And this is, with all of this, I'm going to say, first of all, with all of this, this is still in the growing stages. We're growing it out. I don't even know if I could say this is the birth baby. I might be saying, we're still looking at ultrasound pictures at this point. Maybe not, we'll see. But we're still growing out, we're still supplying tuning lots of things, adding things, so take that as we look at this. But this is the foundational pieces when we look at the initial district dashboard, it kind of, because we'll start to layer on top of all of this data. And like I say, some of the numbers may look high, but that's, as soon as a student has enrolled in the district and since left, they still are staying part of this snapshot right here. So that's why some of those numbers look high. You see enrollment by race, and you had this sent to you as well, too. It must have gone on a little hard streak, but you have this in your packet as well. The percentage of students by low income. So these two areas specifically, we were working on enrollment by race. They've resurveyed student states, done some different things with collecting that ethnicity race data. So we had to do a little cleanup in this last month to really get that all hammered out correctly. And that is now a good representation of where we're at with our enrollment by race. The percentage of students by low income, they say we're really high at 77%. We're still, we have that, we're the C E P district, so we take, we know, we don't have to collect free and reduced applications. We have the direct certification that comes directly from D S H S, but we then to get the the other families that may not qualify, by that way, we have the household income survey. And that's a non-verified part of the process, but we do, we get a good, in the online registration piece, we get a good return rate. So that's, that's where we're at. That's a lot of that is coming, we have both of those categories, the direct certification and the household income surveys, it gets us to that 77%.
Oh, good question. So on that, when people are registering online, do you think that it's been a fair assessment over the years that you've done it, you watched that number be pretty?
Yes.
Percentages are pretty even?
And I'm hoping with all, we always, you know, sometimes they find it correct. So is it, is every application always filled out? I'm not sure, but I do our best to make sure we get that that data back. So usually, sometimes it's hard upon getting back that information on the household income surveys. The way we put it into online registration, we get a pretty good return, so then we still get, because that still helps fund things like lab and lap poverty. And if they, they're not required to return that, so I feel like the way we're processing and how we get a good return on that.
And it's consistent?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it's fluctuated slightly, but it's been in that mid 70s. Here's percentage of students by special ed status, both percentages enrollment, L E P, so it's limited English proficiency, or sometimes elsewhere to a T E L L. You see those numbers. And again, this is all going to be the foundational pieces that are going to be, when we get later into the data, you'll see how we'll pull some of this information out and layer up with other pieces. Chronic absenteeism. The red is where that falls into the chronic. And it's, if you read the definition there, it's 10%, so it's two days a month or 18 days in the school year. I was talking to the, to Sarah with Five Lab, because she's, she's across the country, in Washington, we had to, for COVID, we, any COVID absences count in this process. So I'm moving that maybe, because we're, and let's look at the next slide, you see, it's pretty consistent, all of those preschoolers. I was like, what are we doing? Man, the preschoolers are 99%, and then we drop down 10%, we go through every grade level. But preschooler, as I talked to the preschool department today, the, some of them are two-day-a-week, three-day-a-week, four-day-a-week, and also the way they gather attendance. We may need to look at that and see if we're, if we're really, if that's as accurate as it is. But it's even across all, you can see it's pretty, it's pretty much the same across all grade levels. It's not like we have one area, one building or one grade level that is looking drastically different than the rest of the district. Like I said, maybe we'll see, same thing with race, although when you get into race, if you see some of those sort of populations, remember we don't have a huge black, non-Hispanic population, so any fluctuations in that is going to be more dramatic, you see. Because we just don't have a lot of students in that category, or the native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islanders, same thing. But the most parts, same across the board. When we start breaking it out, attendance by now, here's where you can look at like low income, the students on I A P, students on limited English. But also the same thing here, we're seeing the same thing across all of the, all of the categories. It's pretty much not one, it is, you know, huge gap difference. Attendance over read by absences by period, of course, you look, we've got that first period. So this is where we can start to, the great thing about this is this is where we can have, start having discussions about, hey, what interventions, what thing, what changes might we might want to make to like tackle first period or Fridays? So absences by day of the week. And we can start to break down this information and start to go after, say, we're going to spend the next few months, you know, really going after this area. The activities data, I was happy, I, I, I was like, I'm going to rename all of this, so it has a great name, because it was, our activities data had some different naming conventions between the buildings. I'm like, I'm going to rename it all. And all of a sudden, last week, it duplicated itself and it was like doubled everywhere and like, oh man. And so, but they were able to help me fix that. So this is accurate information. The only thing I'm going to say about activities is we're still juggling, I was just working with Mrs. Kershaw in putting in our F F A and Skills USA students, because those, those have not typically been in the activities data. It's mainly been used for athletics and the way that you're taking care of attendance on early dismissal, or as teams were leaving. So we're starting to now, and we've got a good number of those things, or the riding club, or the United People's Group, getting all of those activities in there. So we can receive a full range of where students are participating. And so there's the percentages broken down there. And then look at this, at the participation by grade level, we can see this, and this is where when we can start, when we can add in the layer of S E L, the social emotional learning, once we can put this on top of this, I'm going to be really curious about what we start seeing. We also fall into currently this year, as far as part of the House Bill 1660, where you have to leave the, we fall into that requirement for a gap reduction, where we have to have a plan in place for the A S B. Just talking to receivers about having the A S B kids, put together a plan of how they can get students to, you know, increase participation in whatever activity that suits them. And so as we can start to make some changes there and also look at our S E L data on top of this, and maybe we can, you know, to make some huge gains in that. I'm going to go into some, I don't like to call it negative, it's opportunity for growth data. As we go into this, I mean, I just turned 50 this year, and suddenly I'm in the opportunity for growth to, for the doctor to check out my blood pressure data. And he wants me to keep, keep recording that and being able to report back to my next appointment. And so, and I could see that as a real negative. And ultimately, at the end, it's for my good, right? And it's going to be for my benefit, for my health. Those last 20 pounds are going to kill me. But anyway, that's why I want, as we go into this data, it's never, it's never a tool for punishment or weapon or anything like that. And we're talking all these groups, this is all about how can we help grow in our district, how can we move forward and do a better job? And so, and that's across all of these groups. It's not just, it starts the district and building leadership, but it goes into staff, it goes into students and families. If we start looking at the work that we're doing with the master-based learning and standards, then the students are going to be able to start seeing ways that they can grow, where they're, where they're not making it, where they need to improve, where they need to excel and take off. And also with our community, the work that we do with getting students out in partnerships and apprenticeships and, and working in different areas of the community, whatever it may be, we can start putting that data in there as well. The community can be a part of looking and seeing how those things are making a difference in the full student picture. So it's a set of growth, we're going to tackle discipline, first of all. So you can look at, here's the discipline referral by incident. And so you go down through that list, I can read those, there's then the average referrals by day of the week, same thing here. We see kind of, it's not like we see one particular day that's, you know, more crazy than the rest. As we look at that. And this is all district-wide data, so this isn't broken down by building yet or anything like that. This is just district-wide data. And if we move into the discipline referrals by location, and then, let me talk about that real quick. So then, because this is another area we can start, we can say we can tackle, let's, where we want to look at what's happening, you know, between the bus and the cafeteria, we're going to tackle those tiers and really see if we can reduce our, our discipline incidences in those, or, you know, obviously classroom is at the highest, what can we do to make a change there? What you see on the right then is this is then where you start to look at, this is our discipline, total discipline count, but it's only, it's 1,058, but it's only involving 415 students. It's not 1,000 different students. You can see at the bottom graph, on the tier three, you see the group of 45 students are in that tier three, where they six-plus discipline incidences versus 208 on tier one. Where they've only had, you know, zero to, sorry, one incident in that.
Is no value, is that just a category that we don't have yet?
I'm thinking that they didn't put that in, so we could, and this is a data cleanup area, so now I say, make sure you put the, we really want the location on this.
Okay.
When it's pulled in, we can really see what is, where things are happening, because, you know, especially if those 19 no values all were in one of the areas there and not equally spread out, and then we say, oh, this, this area is definitely more than we thought it was. So yes, that's a great point of making sure our data is clean. And that's going to be all the way through all of this work is continuing, making sure the data is really reporting what we want to report. The D N F analysis data, look at this, obviously, we see a huge thing between the COVID year of 2021 and 2022. Again, this is, this now is going to be just middle school and high school data. So kids' elementary is on standards-based grading, so we're just looking at the elementary, I'm sorry, from six through 12. And but a huge growth, obviously, we've seen way less Ds and Fs this year than we did last year. And you see the same thing across all of grade levels there as well, and look at it, broken out by grade level. 730 worst students with a base one D or F in the course. And then we can start, this is where it's not as, I'm going to say, this is not as great of a representation because of the asterisk of COVID. Because if you look at Ds and Fs by activity participation, the bottom left there, we didn't have, we didn't have a great data collection on activities for. Even though we were doing things last year, it's, it's obviously something off there. Same thing, we look at chronic absenteeism. Well, we look, last year, yes, we took attendance, but was it as accurate as what we're taking you doing this year? And same thing, same thing for suspensions as well. Obviously, kids weren't getting suspended as much last year. So this is going to be over time as we grow this. And we also can drill down, we can drill down in this, we can, we can look at it, building leaders can start to look at Ds and Fs by department, course, and instructors. And again, it's, it's tackling an area that, hey, can we get together and see why we're having, having this many Ds or Fs in this particular course? What can we do to, to make a change here and improve things for, for staff and students? Now we're going to jump into the elementary, sorry, the iReady data, because it's going to be elementary and middle school. Really great stuff here, because look at all that growth between the beginning of the year and the end of the year. Looking at the green, 19%, the 37%, yellow, 47%. You know, we're, we're growing, the number of kids that we're down in, in the two or more below levels, 32%, now down to 15%. So great stuff here. And we just opened up the end of the year window where they're starting to go in and do that as well. We also got state testing going on right now, too. So some of that will be pushed off till a little bit later. And here we can break it out by grade level. I'll show you iReady data in two different forms. So now we can start breaking it out by doing the same thing we did at a building level, looking at by grade level. So Mr. Key, if we see, let's say, one grade is just not making, three other grades are making huge gains and one grade isn't. Now we continue to get, say, what, what are you guys doing in these, with your iReady to make such huge gains? And it's, it's a great tool to start going in and having professional conversation.
Now, to note, there's two ways to log iReady data. Option one is it could log where students should be by the end of the year, which is guaranteed growth. We actually do the model on where they should be at that point in the year, which is, so to see the green grow, typically, when you're trying to get them to show where they are at that point in the year, the ideal situation would be greens, staying greens all the way across, and that 25%, staying 25% at mid-year, staying 25% at the end of the year. Because it's assessing on where they should be at point in time, it's how our data is showing currently. So when you see that increase, that means how many students have actually moved beyond pace? Right? Versus the other way to show iReady data could be where they should be by the end of the year, which would almost be like, almost all red. Then you would see greens continue to grow. So there's two ways to show it. We're showing, we're showing where they should be at that point in time. This is about four-month gap between these two assessments. So that kind of growth happened in four months. Of course, we came in after the remote learning and COVID and everything. So if you look at later and you see the greens stays consistent, that means we're actually, students are on target. And you see green grow, it means we're growing beyond target. Nice.
Same thing, here's an arrangement to middle school, just keep you a glance at the grade level. Same thing, not quite as, we don't see quite as much due to the elementary, but still, it's all, it's all growth that's happening there. As we look at the math, here's the elementary math, and for this, I shifted over to look at the gap analysis now, after this is sort of the grade level information. So now we can start working out some of those demographic populations. Once again, low income, 33% are meeting, are at or above where they need to be. Therefore, compared to 18%, or, I'm sorry, 33 of not low income and 18% of low income not be. The same thing for gender, for a student on I A P versus student not having I A P. So we can start looking at those gaps, see where we might additional interventions or changes as well. And same thing for, just a quick glance at the middle school math, Gains and iReady. And same thing, their gap analysis on the same areas. See a much larger spread there at the special ed level, middle school. We see the gender is, is coming closer together though. This is our, our Fall Law Kids data, so this exploded just a few weeks ago into the mix. And this is, this is taken those three days at the very beginning before some kindergarten teachers come full-time, when kindergarten teachers are meeting and assessing students during that time. And this is where, this is the percentage that are ready by each one of those domains, the social, emotional, physical, now literacy, language, and cognitive. And so you can see that information, and then we can break it out, this is where, and we can really start having, and start talking about pre-K and early learning, where we can see how we can make early intervention to, to bring kids in at a higher percentage ready in each one of those domains. And also go back to where I talked about, when we talked about chronic gaps, and T S N D was, so this starts at kindergarten, you can see here the, the gap there between chronic absentee students versus not currently absent, 23% versus 24%. And so, kind of wrapping this up, there's definitely more to build and put into what we started in all of our key initiative areas. We have S E L is supposed to, I was hoping that it would be loaded for this meeting, but it's, she said, it's not quite there yet, but it's, we're really looking at any week where that would be part of our, our five lab information. And we've got things in each one of the other areas, the work that Katie's doing, and Stacy, and the university's side of learning. And redefining ready, there's lots of information we've been meeting and looking at what data we want for that, for career and college readiness. And so looking at our dual credit, our apprenticeship work that we're going to be getting underway, and industry certifications, all those things that we can start adding into that and layering on top of all of the pieces of data that we have with students, same for pre-K.
So some of those things to break them down, the social emotional learning is going to take a while, because we're going to have a social emotional learning dashboard. But we're also going to create an indicator across all dashboards, so we can begin developing targeted interventions. So one of those, Phil, I wonder if you can help me out on this, because it stood out to you in your training on staff, like, how many students feel connected to their campus data indicator? Was like, what is the connection to your campus rate? And then how does that connect with the activities, right? Like, how many students feel connected to the campus? And then how is that connected to academic performance? So there's a few key indicators on that. Sorry, I probably didn't actually need to fill in for me, but you did the training. But so, so we want, we felt that it would maybe worthwhile looking across at our iReady data. But, uh, so, so we want, we felt that it would maybe worthwhile looking across at our iReady data, our activity engagement, our attendance rate, and looking at that social emotional indicator and saying, okay, we can start building our social, you know, social emotional interventions. Which area should we look at first, right? And then what we see is working and driving that to improve that academic performance, right? Because right, right now, we're going to look at correlations, and by digging in, we can look for causality. So that one's close to being done. The UDL design, what we're looking at is we've pulled out a Skyward of the IEP minutes and where students are being serviced, or what type of, where they're receiving special education services. And then can we break that apart into specific intervention in classroom training? So UDL is working with teachers to develop those interventions in their classrooms, so we're not doing anywhere near as much pullout. So can we identify what specific services our students are receiving? So we can run to professional development opportunities for our general education population, teaching staff. So then those services can be provided in the general education learning environment. We don't need to run a special wow. People looking at what kind of services, what kind of services are our students receiving that's kind of close to grade level? That we feel that we can use data to say, okay, we can just do that in a mainstream environment. We don't need to run pullout, let's target our mainstream interventions, provide our teachers with support, run lots of pullout service. And then the redefining ready dashboard is using research-based indicators on what drives post-secondary performance. So a good example is students who earn twelve usable dual credits, which is one quarter. And they have an ARV GPA, and the key is usable, because if you can't use the credits, it doesn't matter. So students who can waive one college quarter are sixty-four percent more likely to complete a post-secondary education. So we know that that's a fact, right? So can we start connecting our students with those twelve usable dual credits and have that same level of indication? So it's looking at the best research-based practices, do we have ways to measure it? And then those are all the dashboards that are in construction. But our issue is, is we need to clean up how we collect the data. Because the state requires us to collect dual credit rates. But are we collecting in a way that helps us with our, right now, we're collecting in a way that helps our reporting to the state. But as it's coming back to us, it's like, well, it's not helping us use it, so we have to clean it up, which we found with our activities dashboard.
Yes, so still in some, and, and go leave. And like, and then to just wrap up, the master-based learning, as we're working on that, Empower System, we'll start putting in. This is just a quick snapshot, this is just a little, I'm not expecting you to see much of it, other than this gives you, this is a looking at math standards across just those checked-up grade levels there. Just, this is, we start to, this is kind of gives you a look at what, what Empower looks like inside of it. And as we start to pull up those and figure out a way that we're going to pull that into, currently doing as well, data collection and see, see how we build out on that as well.
So the Empower Learning Management System is like a Google Classroom, but it gets you down by, down to the standard. Each one of those check boxes, you see one of those colored boxes, is a standard. And then each color is a different grade level. So you see it across the top, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, those colors are the grade levels. And this will allow us to look at granular data on what standards are students able, are achieving. And then we can begin cross-referencing that also with student-level engagement.
We're still building out, still lots of data, still lots of cleanup, and this is where teachers are working on all of that standard work right now. They'll be editing standards, reloading standards to finish off this. Right now, we just have that kind of reloaded some initial ones and, you know, we'll do the bulk of work of getting that all transitioned. So one of that, one additional next steps, it's, you see, there's a certain level of patience as we wait for some of these things to be built. When I was on the phone call, Sarah was doing stuff, I'm like, hey, what are you doing? I didn't know you do that. And she said, well, only a couple of my districts get to do this. I'm like, okay, so we want to be one of the districts that gets to do so. She goes, not everybody gets to go in this area. So I said, well, I want to be able to do better. And then we're looking at current year versus data over time. I say, we're going to build this out over years, and we start to look at that historical data and see how we're, it's really making a difference, right? And then also get this into the hands of staff. Right now, admin team has accounts into there, but we haven't really fully launched it out where it gets into the hands of even the, the admin team. And so that's the whole process. And like I said, reiterating, the putting, stacking all of these layers on top of each other to really get the full picture of the student. And the second question to, to end the presentation, as Chris asked me, is what does a successful alma graduate look like? Can you see, done, work on that with the profile of the graduate? I don't remember what I said in the moment at that time. I think something about, they really feel part of the alma. I don't know exactly what I said, but really, as I think about this and what I've seen on the work that we've done over the course of the year, really seeing they're pursuing excellence. And this is my, this is Eric Smith's definition, it's not part of the fortune we graduated. This is just like, in everything that they do, they pursue excellence, and they are, because that's going to get them to where they want to be. Mediocre is halfway between success and failure, and who likes to be mediocre? And nobody, mediocre doesn't even sound good, it's like Luke Bond, if he likes a more cup of anything, I don't remember a few random people, but, you know. So we don't want to be mediocre, or we don't want our data to be, to be mediocre, we want to be, our, growing our data into excellence and want our students to be pursuing everything that they are going into with excellence. And so thinking about Jared, as he says, he take him up to Lyman's, to Lyman's School. So I'm just thinking like, as, you know, I don't know if there's other alma students that have gone through the same school, but as Jared goes through, and then if there's students behind him, they start, they're, they're noticing, hey, there's something about these alma students. They just have an excellence about them, you know, they're going to, we want to start building pathways like that, where all of our kids, they go off into whatever they're, whatever they are endeavoring to do, but they, they pursue excellence, and they tackle life with excellence. So that's where I'm going to end. Thank you, that's really exciting what we're doing.
Yeah.
So.
I have a good question.
Thank you.
So, and when it gets into the hands of staff, so if, say I have a student that is struggling, and are they able to break it down to that individual student, look at all the different data, you know, look at income, absences, the discipline,
You can't get.
Activity involvement and all that, narrowed down to like a specific student?
Yes, there is a profile card that you can create per person, which is showing, where it would have some, I don't know, perhaps every single one of those pieces of information. And you definitely go into the, each area and break down, when you look at these charts, you can see the exact data that is creating that chart as well.
Because I'm just thinking there would be a big difference between a, a child that is at school almost every day, and they're still failing their classes, you know? Why are they failing their classes when they're there to receive the information?
Yes.
And so that causes us to look at different directions. Or if the child is absent and not really receiving the instruction, then we can look at that and tailor it to that individual's student.
We can, and, and, and the big goal, though, would be to kind of move from a quantitative to a qualitative process, right? Like, as, we can totally drill down with student. We haven't created a student's scorecard. One of the examples we have in our career of college readiness platform is a scorecard. So then that way, you know, it breaks it down, so the teachers can pull it up and print it off for the students. And the students can see how well they're doing on hitting these post-secondary indicator rates. We could break every student, every one of these things down to the individual student and create a student profile card. We can see their new castle, social emotional indicator scores, we can see, I mean, everything, we can break it all down. Attendance rates, is there a coming to school, and we can print it off. We haven't built a dashboard, or we haven't built a student's scorecard to do that yet. Because we're still, A, thinking about what do we want to see, like, we knew social emotional is one of our district priorities. We knew, so I think this has indicated that this, you know, part of one, part of my evaluation, but we broke it down to, we knew master-based learning was a priority. We wanted to get every student down to that, we wanted to get down to thinking about things on our strategic goals. We knew UDL was a priority, so we wanted to make sure that every intervention was covered. I mean, we, once that data dashboard's in, we could actually show specifically what interventions a student is receiving, what activities they're enrolled in, we could show all of that. I think the big question is, is, is it, is it useful at this point, right? Or is it not yet? Is it still better seeing a quantitative point? Or do we want to start breaking down to the micro level, so it's qualitative? Do we want to break it down so that way a student can print off the scorecard and they can use it for themselves? And the student can then begin taking ownership? I mean, if we're talking about student-led conferences or student-led, student-led IEPs, where the student leads their own IEP, and they're aware of, these are the intervention services I'm receiving, and this is how I'm receiving them, then it opens the door. But we are far from there, because we're still collecting the data.
Right, but I mean, that is something that we could be coming down the road at some point.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, totally.
I feel like there's such multiple layers of use, or usability from the data once it's completed, like, yeah, I like that one.
And Eric won't toot his own horn, but Alma was asked to present to WSA for Lunch and Mark, all the superintendents across the state. Because it, it didn't take long, but we got, that we were asked by WSA to do a presentation on the data saying that Alma's on the fast track to having the most robust data look on their students in the entire state, or school districts across the state. Alma was asked to run a training, so. So anyway, but it's, the data that Eric's been building out was, like, I don't think anybody has this, I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody across the state has this. Has this.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, we're going to go ahead and hear from Mr. Applicar for our graduation plan update.
I think this boy is joining us virtually, too. Um, gosh, I guess this boy said if you're a nineteen ninety grad and beyond, that you know this very, very well, because this is.
She was one year prior. You're welcome. We, we fit in that category of the ninety and up.
So it kind of speaks for itself, I'm happy to go over all of these, and Mr. Way can chime in too as well. The senior awards, they're going to be Tuesday, we're not having a baccalaureate this year. My understanding is from this way, is that the connection with the churches wasn't what, post-COVID, they just didn't get enough connection with the kids and doing that. I mean, I'm sure next year it'll back, I would assume, know it's that. And then Thursday, senior night, and then with baby pics, that's a big one, I guess, around here, which is really cool, I like that, that's good. And then Safe and Silver Party at the Pavilion is at nine, I will be there. And that's immediately following senior night. And then Friday, gearing up for graduation, it'll be the breakfast at the Pavilion, and then grad practice. And then my understanding is Chief Schultz in the past has kind of talked to the kids about how they're going to do their alma senior salute. She won't be here, but she's going to have an officer there to go through that. And I like the reward system she explained to me is very cool, that's real good. And so then that senior salute will happen about noonish, and we'll have kids coming out from school to, to welcome the grads. And then graduation is one at the Pavilion, it opens at eleven, and seniors arrive by twelve, so it's pretty self-explanatory. The coolest thing about it is after talking to some of my principal friends around the state is back to normal, which is the best part. That's what I got, asking.
Yeah, do you know when the senior walk is going to happen at elementary?
Yes.
Ten forty.
Yes. That is, May twenty-fifth, that's exactly right. It can be whatever you want, sir.
At ten forty.
I originally had eleven thirty-nine AM, but we're going to go eleven forty now.
I'll take, I'll take that.
We, we've already, I should have put that on there, excuse me, I'm glad you asked about that. The buses have already been arranged and everything's done for that, so it's ready to go.
So to reiterate, May twenty-fifth at ten forty, yes. Did you say eleven forty?
Ten forty. I said whatever Mark wants me to say.
You just make sure Mark's listening.
Yeah, we'll be at, and then down to the middle school after that, and then the kids can disperse or ride the bus back either way. So thanks for the catch, I appreciate it. All right, any questions? I'm excited. I've never gone through this before, so I'm a little bit nervous, but I'm also really excited to be part of it.
Good deal. Thank you. Okay, we're going to have the E S D one thirteen Student Support Service presenter, Alyssa Pike.
I'm not Alyssa Pike.
You are not, that's not what you said.
But Alyssa is wonderful as well, and she may be on Zoom, but I'm not sure. I'm very excited to be here tonight, but probably more excited about that data presentation that we just saw. Like, we, I look at faces in this room, I think we've been talking about data and Ella for five years now. And a lot of, Chris, you know, stares like, um, we have things, they're, they're somewhere, and that is so cool. And I'm not surprised that you guys are presenting, so that was an unexpected treat. So I'm here from Hattaway Region, E S D one thirteen, our student support team, and student support is responsible for non-academic supports in schools with partnership. And we have a robust set of services that are being implemented here in the Alma School District, and I'm here to talk about them. So we have services across the district, most of the services this year are targeted at the elementary school. This is just sort of a crosswalk of what is available in each building. So the elementary school has a behavioral health support person who provides tier one and tier two services for students with behavioral health needs. We'll talk about that more in detail a little bit. Emily is here, Emily, you want to say hello to everyone?
Hi.
Um, we also have a student assistance navigator who's connected to our school-based health center. And then we do have a school-based health center that is in its first year of implementation at the elementary school. And then at the middle school, we have a full-time student assistance professional, there's not a name, because our S A P didn't resign very recently, but we have hired somebody new who will not start until June. So for the remainder of this year, Steve Bushman, who is one of our student assistance professionals who served Alma before, will be finishing out the school year, and you will have a full-time S A P back next year. So a lot of people ask, why are we doing this behavioral health stuff? Why are we doing a school-based center? Why does it make sense in schools? So we know from our most recent healthy use survey data, and what I'm sure you guys see every day, is Grace Harbor students are experiencing significant physical and behavioral health issues. And students often don't connect with services that are available in the community. There are transportation issues, there are physical distance issues, but it can be hard to get to services in the community. And we also know, even though these services are non-academic, students with significant health issues are less likely to graduate from school. So it's really important that we address those things. When you look at attendance and chronic attendance, health issues obviously impact that significantly, so we want to give them services in the school to keep them in school. So this is what the significant health issues in Grace Harbor County look like, this is from the most recent twenty twenty-one, so administered in October of this school year, got off a little bit with COVID. The kind of bright green box is students who are at a healthy weight in eighth, tenth, and twelfth grade. That sort of olive is students who are overweight, and the gray is students who are obese, blue is students who are underweight. So we can see close to forty percent of students across grade levels are either overweight or obese. And so that's a significant health issue that can have long-term health impacts and something that we can be addressing through good quality healthcare. Also, oral health, which is something that's addressed in our school-based health center, is a significant issue with about one in five students in eighth grade and tenth grade, and about a third of students in twelfth grade who haven't seen a dentist in the last year. And many of you know your dentist recommends you go in twice a year, so not having seen a dentist in the last year is pretty significant. And then that olive green is students who miss school because of a toothache. There's also some really interesting data, if you're interested and want to look at the healthy use survey dashboard around oral health and attendance. So it is really important, oral health is also one of the best indicators of overall health. Also, students are having significant behavioral health issues. I want to keep in mind that these are eighth grade and up data, because those are only asked of those students. But what we've seen particularly with COVID and these behavioral health issues is that they, we're seeing them trickle down into the lower grades as well. We just don't explicitly ask about it. So again, over half of our students are feeling anxious, and again, more than half of them are saying, I'm so anxious that I'm not able to control my worry. And when you think about a student sitting in a classroom who's experiencing that level of anxiety, it's really hard to engage in their academics. Same thing, not quite as significant, but a high percentage of our students who are experiencing feelings of depression. So again, thinking about students sitting in your classroom who are struggling with these issues, less likely to be able to pursue academics that are offered to them. What's nice to see is much lower actually substance use, that's one thing, with COVID, we saw substance use decreases, which was different than I think a lot of people expected to see, but given that students didn't have as many places to go, or home a lot, or with family, we saw parental substance use shoot up, but student substance use actually dropped. And so the sort of bright or darker green is student reported past thirty-day use of alcohol, and the olive is student past reported thirty-day use of marijuana. And again, we see a significant increase between eighth grade and graduation. Very excited to hear you're having a Safe and Silver Party after graduation, that's fantastic. And many of you are probably familiar with multi-tiered support, it's how academics happen in schools. Much like that model, we try and build all. Much like that model, we try and build all of our support services on a tiered system that are layered. So tier one, everybody gets either school wide practices. These are things that we embed for all students. Tier two are targeted interventions. So students who are at risk, students who are experiencing needs that need to be addressed. And tier three are what we call our behavioral and physical health treatment services. So this would be mental health treatment, substance use treatment, chronic disease management, those kinds of things. So when you think about this from a health framework, those school wide practices are the immunizations, regular dental visits, those kinds of things that our students should have from a behavioral health perspective, these are policies around how we treat one another, consistent messaging around how to practice good self care, those kinds of things. A tier two interventions are targeted again at students who are at risk and need a little bit more. Often happens in small group. So you might be wondering, how does all this happen in our community? So the Community Prevention and Wellness Initiative is an initiative in Washington State, and I want to say started about fifteen years ago, not exactly sure. Many of you who have been in schools for a long time might remember St. Andrew's School Dollars that every school used to get. And they would get a little bit of prevention, a little bit of intervention, a little bit of support. This state sort of redid that model and said, it's not really effective. It's not impactful. We can't do enough in most of our schools. So they came up with the Community Prevention and Wellness Initiative and targeted high needs communities. They get full time student assistance services and a community based coalition to address substance use specifically. So that allows one full time student assistance professional in the, to serve the secondary buildings in Elma. They do universal school wide prevention services. So these are things like celebrating no tobacco day, celebrating Red Ribbon Week, those kinds of things, promoting positive behaviors that are non substance using social norms campaigns, those kinds of things. They also have a school based prevention, youth prevention teams are working with students who are identified or self identified as leaders and want to contribute positively to their school community. They help with planning and a lot of the events that are implemented by the student assistance professional. We also do screening and referral for behavioral health conditions. I was looking at your data and I see that you had quite a few tobacco discipline issues. Those are great referrals to our student assistance professional because we also know many of our students who are using tobacco are also using other substances. And so we can screen them and determine if there are other needs that they have, or we can provide intervention services for their tobacco use. It's much smaller number of drug discipline issues. That's great. Also early intervention for substance use concerns. So there's a whole spectrum of services that we offer. These include things like groups for people who are impacted by their parental or other family members substance use. We call that affected others. So they may not be using themselves, but they may be really struggling because mom or dad is using drugs or alcohol, or older brother or sister, or someone close to them. We offer a user group. So these are students who are starting to experiment with substances that maybe not lose, using heavily yet. And so we want to tackle what's going on and give them better coping skills. We also offer some early education again for students often who have discipline issues. So alcohol, tobacco and other drugs. Education. And then we also are licensed behavioral health treatment agency and provide substance use treatment for students who have a diagnosable substance use disorder and that includes both outpatient and, or outpatient and intensive outpatient service. And that's really guided by levels of area. We also have a A E S D. So there are nine E S Ds across the state. This is one of the first statewide projects that we have done in partnership is all nine E S Ds, so fifty one districts, fifty one SAPs hired across the state to work specifically in schools, in buildings, providing early intervention tier one, tier two for mental health and behavioral health issues. So it looks a lot like the student assistance model for substance use, but we also address mental health and that's a primary focus of what we do. That puts Emily in the elementary school. She's there right now, three to four days a week. Again, universal school wide mental health promotion and substance use prevention services. Those are tailored to the developmental level of elementary students. I know people are like substance use prevention. What does that mean at the elementary level? This means things like building positive relationships in the school community, building resiliency skills, building positive social skills, getting connected with positive like activities and things like that. We know those are the things that over time are going to make them less likely to use substances. And then also promoting good mental health. So practicing self care, deep breathing. How do you get your body up and moving to feel better? Those kinds of things. Also screening and referral for behavioral health conditions. We are also a licensed mental health treatment agency, but we do not offer mental health services here in Elma. We are partnered with BHR and so students who need that tier three behavioral health treatment get referred to BHR or depending on their funding and choice, other providers within the community. And then early intervention for mental health. Right now, our primary model is called Trails. Coping with COVID. And so it's a seven session. Am I right, Emily? Seven sessions? Seven session intervention primarily delivered in group, but we can also do it as individuals that just teach skills skills around how to cope with the context of the world right now. Feel like coping with COVID, and I think they're going to be changing that name, is a little bit misleading because it really is just coping skills. How do I deal with the stress and anxiety that are just part of our world by now? How do I make sure that I'm making time for my own wellbeing, taking care of my own physical and mental health, those kinds of things? And because again, they're layered. So those tier two services can be offered to students who are also in tier three. We would do that in partnership with their therapists to just make sure it makes sense for that student. We also have our school based health center, which is a HERSA Health and Human Services Resources. That doesn't look right. Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Services Administration, a federal project that was funded for four years. This is year one. So School Based Health Center is a collaborative and partner of consortiums from Elma School District, Capital Region ESD, Pacific Metal Center, who provides the medical services and Elma Family Dental. The vision is empowering students, families and communities to make safe and healthy choices through caring and dynamic relationships. And the strategic purpose is to collaborate with schools and communities to identify equitable school practice, school based health services for students and families. So these services are offered both occasionally in the school through telehealth. Anything else you would add?
We did. There is this smile. So we would do partner with outside too.
Yeah. And so our first oral health screening happened on March eleventh, seventy one total consent forms were received and sixty one students were screened. I believe that was a huge success and it sounds like the biggest piece of feedback is probably especially more time next time. The kindergartners laying a little more slowly than maybe were anticipated.
Yes.
Yeah. And so the, and then the smile will be a little serve thirty one patients. School based health center again, telehealth services for medical care, plans to schedule in person while child visits on days that will be identified in the future. There's a consortium that's been identified and created that strategic vision and mission. And the consortium was also awarded a $10,000 grant from Grace Harbor Community Foundation to support program outreach. And this year's main focus has been on outreach and education. So letting families know this is available, getting forms signed, those kinds of things. And we can expect to see a lot more activities related to school based health next year. And then we talked about CPWI, that there's the student assistance part of that. And then there's also a coalition that's required by the grants. This is the first time that we as ESD have taken on the work of the coalition. Depending on what day you ask us and what has happened in our conversations with some of our partners, we may tell you, we will never do it again. Or we may say it's the greatest thing we've ever done. But the portion of the community coalition is really so that those drug free messages penetrate the community and family members and not just students in school. So that Elma is not just, we're safe and drug free in our schools, we're safe and drug free in our community. And so really wrapping around that community support. And the vision of CPWI is that after a saturation period of student assistance and this work in the schools, that we will see those substance use rates decrease. And then the community will be prepared to continue that work. I say that, and like I said, it's been fourteen or fifteen years that we've been doing CPWI. They've never moved one of our sites on. So in theory, that maybe happens, but it has not yet. Um, and Elevate East County is the name of the coalition. It's a group of parents, providers, students, teachers and community members. We have sector representatives that are required. I think many of you in the room actually signed on a sector partner. So we appreciate that. The mission that was recently determined is to again empower community with the knowledge and resources to build a brighter tomorrow for our youth. And the vision is to have resilient youth who choose to rise above using alcohol and other drugs and make healthier choices for themselves and our future generations. Particularly in Elma, one of the things we're seeing is people stay in their community, right? And so this investment isn't just about the students that we're serving now, but then just for their children that will continue to reside in this community. Coalition is currently in the final stages of completing the strategic plan for the upcoming year and plans to include strategies that were targeted both the school and the community. And there is a link to the Facebook page or the coalition if you want to like and follow. Any questions?
Not right now. For me, that was a lot of information.
One of the best places I receive feedback on your work is when it's great to see the smile. It's great to see the services. It's great to walk around. But it's when I'm with my own daughter at soccer practice and a parent comes up and says, my parent was like, I have students in foster care, every student, every one of our children with us seen. And through this model, and you can get that firsthand from the parents and the students on how is that the impact? So that, that feedback I find is the best feedback. And I think that had just happened when I came over to speak to Alexis and said, Alexis, I need to be there. Can you come speak at our board meeting? Because the feedback I'm getting is, is incredible. And so I think the work that you guys have done for our students and our families has just been nothing short of amazing. It's just a story that needs to be told.
And I do want to say, these are all brand new projects. So we also have data and we'll have outcomes data in the future, pretty robust outcomes data. But because this is our initiation of it, we don't have that yet. Most of our data is pre posted. So how were they doing before? How are they doing after? And we don't know how they're doing after yet. So I hope at some point to be able to share that with you in the future.
The, the Healthy Youth Survey for Grace Harbor, was that distributed to all of Grace Harbor schools? Is it just a handful?
Um, so everyone has access to it. And if you visit askhys.org, I believe you can see for the state, county, ESD region, each district gets their own data as well. And so I assume, Chris, you have your data for Elma specifically. So yes, there is, and that's all the way down to the building level.
Totally anonymous.
Right. I was just curious. I mean, the anxiety was, you know, seventy one percent amongst kids and I'm just curious.
And it's really interesting because that's for all of Grace Harbor. And then when you look at your building level data, some of that is even greater. Yeah. So that, that would be another piece of data that you could potentially dive into and look at. And what does that look like specifically for our students? And then you can of course refer that to the rest of Grace Harbor and the rest of the state.
A lot of that data was included in our most recent panorama survey. The reason why we chose you for panoramas, we also see how that data intersects with academic performance. So then we can target it. We know our students have a lot of needs. So give us the ability to triage as opposed to the health.
Was it taken in November or was it taken in March?
I think October.
October.
So yeah.
It's changed completely.
Back with masks and.
And the other thing about healthy use survey data is every two years and it's not cohort models. So it's sixth grade every year. And you can do some cohorting if you know, okay, sixth grade in twenty twenty is now eighth grade this year, but we screwed everything up with COVID because last administration was twenty twenty, twenty twenty two got canceled because of COVID. Or twenty, no, twenty eighteen was our last administration, twenty twenty got canceled because of COVID. And so I don't know what you do if you're cohort now. You started to win again.
I would just like to say that like Bernard said, when this, when the rollout came to us at the beginning of this year, we're coming out of COVID and I was in the same boat. This is a lot. I'm going to do this. Where am I going to put them? Do we, how are we going to get this, this stuff in place? But I would say that these guys just sit the road running and a lot of the burden that I had, because we know, we know that students at risk. We try very hard to connect with families. We have minimal amounts of time to do that, but this is a process, new resource, because that's what they really need. They, we need to be able to connect to those parents of those students at risk and then get them to follow through. So what these ladies have done is they helped those parents make it easy to follow through with getting the services that their kids need. So it's been fantastic. I'll be the first one to say I was really overwhelmed when it came, but they've made it easy. I want you to know that. My favorite story, uh, when they did the screening for the demos, uh, the demo appointments. It was done in the nurse's office right across from my office and I was in there working. And they brought this little kindergartner in there and the dentist is in there, the doctors in there and the little kindergartner, five year old walks in and goes, am I getting braces today? Yeah, anyway. It just had a huge impact already. And we do know this too, that a lot of those parents that are at risk kids, as the word of mouth travels that hey, they made this easy for us. It's going to do nothing but grow up. And so.
And that's something, and it is the partnership truly of your staff and the prep work they do with families. Because one of the things we knew when we put these services in elementary school, it's the first time we've had this COVID response project. But it's really hard to engage families because they're the catalyst. Their students are too young. They have to be the ones who respond. And I think Emily, you have been able to outreach and connect and screen every student that's been referred to. Is that right?
I have. I have two that I'm still.
But that's unheard of.
Aggressively reaching out to you, because we don't like words like stalking. So I'm aggressively reaching out and supporting robustly because.
We call it home visits.
So, um, but I've been, parents have been really, really responsive. I think we all know that everybody has a brain and right now is a really hard time for all of our brains. And so, um, and I, I don't know. If you guys in the district office team, like we play football outside, right outside the district office and it's pretty fun. There's a lot of painting and it's just, it's soft and it's fun. You know, we, we get to have part of keeping our brains safe and they're little is having fun. And so parents, I've been able to meet with between fifteen and twenty parents and serve their students so far.
And that's just since.
Just since April.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
So I've been, I've been in a lot of those and it's been going well.
And you know, our real target is those anxiety rates that you were noticing is when we get these services to these students, we build these skills for them. Early we'll see those decreases as they get older. That's what we want. We want our students to feel good about what's going on in their lives.
And this is a really important time to have this presentation in our meeting. It goes along with everything we're trying to do in the community to have engagement with parents in the community. And, and really it, it takes our entire town to come together this. So this being on a school board meeting and out in the public, I hope everybody's, you know, sharing and telling and willing to reach out and come forward, even if it's not them, it's someone else. So I appreciate the work that you all are doing. It's it's a lot of stuff. Yeah.
We're very happy to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hey, communications and comments. Anyone from ETO? E E S P? E Copa? Abin? Persons to be heard or public comment? Actually have a strike through.
So just to comment on that, our, our board agenda is we cannot, if it gets added, can it's typically a little added right when we make the request. We can't take it off, we're only strike through. So there is a request, it'll be there. But when there is a public comment, the board isn't able to respond to that because we have to advertise any conversation that has to happen in twenty four hours in advance. So the bare minimum would be six PM on Tuesday. So I think more conversation on if there's something that's immediate, and I think that's what happened. If there's something immediate, it's being able to call any board member. And the board member can refer you to myself, who can be the right person to the district. And then we can solve, like work through the issue and we can engage in a conversation. It feels really, really cold when we receive a question in a board meeting. And I know our board members hate it. But because we didn't advertise the public comment, if our board does receive a question, we have to sit here and say, thank you very much. We've heard your concern. And, and that's really what the board is limited on because our community member who would have wanted to know about what was being discussed, didn't have the ability to come hear that discussion because it wasn't advertised in the agenda. And that's why.
Thank you. Good news.
Oh, lots. First, Jamie Bailey is a hundred dollars poorer.
True story.
Did you want to, I don't want to take your story.
Well, it's just something we've done with Jared since, I don't know, he was in kindergarten playing baseball. We'd always say that Benjamin's over the fence and a Benjamin is a hundred dollar bill. So he earned his Benjamin.
And they're on to?
Regionals. Well, district championship. Regionals. Well, district championships is Friday, um, but they do go to regionals.
My uh, friend, Peter, um, is the superintendent in the center, so I will not miss an opportunity to do that. Sending Peter a home sticker.
I will say, I will say with that though, uh, uh, Jaden Tiffany, JT, he hit a homerun the night before. So both seniors hit homeruns in district games. So it was pretty cool.
And we beat Tenino.
And we beat Tenino.
Alma is breaking the bracket. So we've been having a lot of success. And soccer came back for a comeback.
Yes.
We are on championship game on Saturday. So there's so, so much excitement going on right now. We have a lot of great things going on here in Alma. So. And then I've gotten word since we've been in this meeting, FFA is outstate. And they start tomorrow, but my educator has already told me she's having a lot of fun. So.
Good deal.
I know my, my thirteen-year-old um, is having a lot of fun, but um, I think that our board member, Ms. Smith, is over at FFA State. So um, Eric, Eric is, yeah, she's having a blast. Eric is going on by himself tonight. So lots of great things going on.
Thank you. Um, and just to everyone out there that's listening, you're heading on to a, to an event to compete in a way, best of luck. Um, okay, we have new business. So we have the approval of resolution uh, nine dash two one two two study and survey report.
Pull that up. That is the copy of the site survey. It's part of our long-range facilities plan. And that is kind of the, the feedback report that we've received as part of that, of that, that foundation moving into our long-range facilities work. So now our, that's part of our, what is it? Is every six years we can do a site? Every seven years we can do a site and survey. And this is the, that one's every seven years site and survey report as a portion of our long range. You guys reviewed that. Is there anything you would like to add to that?
Um, the company did a great job with the um, you know, information like that. It's not always stuff you want to hear, but stuff you need to hear. So it's good, good stuff. And uh, they pointed us to some things to look at. Overall, it kind of made me feel pretty good that the buildings are in further age, pretty decent condition. So.
Thank you for all your work on that too. I know it was a, a lot of stuff going on for you.
I'll move, yeah, I'll move the approval of resolution nine dash two one two two study and survey report.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, we have a strike through on the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar. Um, there's a, another part of the union that has to have a look at it before we can do it. So I assume we're going to circle back around for next meeting.
We are very close to approve the school calendar. We do um, have our, in our contracts to have uh, our, our two associations review it. And that will make the final approval.
Okay, thank you. Uh, approval of out-of-state travel for music in May for Aaron's thousand house and students on May twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth of this month.
He is also available on Zoom for questions if you have these.
Thank you.
I know this is something that's been going on for years um, with our students. So uh, I moved for the approval of out-of-state travel for music in May for Aaron's thousand house and students on May twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two.
Hold seconded. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck, Aaron.
That'll be fun. It's always a funny event. I did it when I was in high school.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, Aaron?
Um, thank you. We've got seven students going um, this year. Uh, there's four choir students and three band students. Um, I think only one of them has actually had the opportunity to go because the last two years it's been canceled um, because of COVID and stuff. So um, they're really excited. They're all practicing really hard because we got our music kind of late this year. Um, and yeah, it should be, it should be a lot of fun again.
Great. Well, have a great time.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of out-of-area teaching assignments. Mr. Smith?
I do apologize that I bring these two years. Uh, it's late. There's a few that just fell through on this. And some of them are kind of in situations with Katie and Audrey. Uh, they're, they're both in, uh, Audrey's this year too, uh, with C T E. Uh, but C T E does not go down to sixth grade. So both of these are, or they're sixth grade classes. It's just one section of sixth grade for each one of them. Uh, and Katie better did get real school uh, for mid-level science endorsement this year as well, but it does not cover his specific course he's teaching this year. So. And then Aaron is just taking, he has one session of high school up here.
I'll move for the approval of out-of-area teaching assignments.
I'll second it.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, superintendent report, Mr. Nesta.
May nineteenth, if you mark it on your calendar, this is going to be our signing day. And we'll have more invitations going out. Our signing day for our Alma Registered Apprenticeship. Uh, we have three partners in our aviation, Sierra Pacific and uh, Bon Pump, where students will be working during the school day. They will be getting paid apprenticeship wages, earning academic credit. They will earn fifteen college credits, thirty thousand dollars a year while they're in high school. Time on the job does not count as work time. Minors can only work about twenty to twenty-four hours a week. But if they've worked during the school day while they're earning credit, that doesn't count into that time per Alma and I. And because they're in a registered apprenticeship, which will culminate in a journey level certification. Um, uh, they're allowed to do industrial skills while they're on the job. So that means a student's been trained as a welder, even though they're sixteen. And it's the only way for an industry business partner to receive what's called a minor work variance. Um, to um, a minor work variance, which allows that business to allow sixteen-year-olds to run industrial equipment on the job. Because that sixteen-year-old has been trained in the safety and operations of that piece of equipment. So we are the first in the Olympia area, uh, the whole capital, uh, E C one thirteen capital region area to uh, launch the full registered apprenticeship, um, youth apprenticeship. So we are have gone all in and we actually have the exclusive M O U partnership with the Joint Apprenticeship Training Committee to revenue. So May nineteenth is our signing day. So um, and I think our next board meeting is the career college readiness. So that puts us on the twenty-fourth after the signing day. So I need to try to trump them right now.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I know that that was a lot of work and a lot of moving parts, and I'm really excited for the students.
I, I will say, the hardest part is, and this was kind of our big thing where I came from, was doing apprenticeship. And I can tell you flat out, I had absolutely nothing to do with this work. Um, the positions, the core plus permission manufacturing program that Christie Kershaw had in place has already set the stage. The career connected coordinator, Mary Roberts, of already having the business partners, had already had everything that, um, everything was ready to go. And it was uh, things that were just, you know, um, lined up, having the business partners set. Um, honestly, uh, Christie uh, and Mary Roberts really deserve all the credit for this work to have. You know, we said, we, we were, we were, we were ready. So um, Christie and Mary really do deserve every one hundred percent of the praise for having everything ready. So.
Chris, do we know how many kids are going to be signing?
We're signing four or five, five. We're signing five students.
And is that, I'm, I'm just curious, is that an application process? And who selects? How does that work?
You have to get hired first. So the students have to apply for the business, the business employs the student. And the Alma School District re- recognizes the training of a student who is already employed. So it is not, you don't, it's not a class you can enroll in. You can't sign up for the class. You can't just go in because um, and this is the term of the world of registered apprenticeship, apprenticeship begins with the job. So you have to have the job first, then you can move into the registered apprenticeship. And then we are cross-trained with the joint apprenticeship training. So, and that's all apprenticeships that you're going to do like in school.
So was there a commitment, a two-year commitment uh, with these apprenticeships or?
Uh, they commit the student till they reach the journey level certification. I think these are, we're doing industrial maintenance, which is three thousand hour registered apprenticeship. So the employer's committed for a three thousand hour training. Um, unless the student kind of either a J T C can say that they, they journeyed out earlier by saying they reached the standards. Um, by the region, the O J T, which is on-the-job training, and they've met the objectives of the on-the-job training earlier. So we are open to juniors and seniors to move from the registered apprenticeship or the industrial maintenance. So it's apprenticeship on training, fixing and repairing the, the equipment. So like Sierra Pacific, it would be fixing the mill. And uh, the on-the-line assessment. So the employers have committed to seeing the student through. But this is the big caveat. Um, students who lose their jobs um, in the mid-year do put themselves at risk of not completing their coursework. If you got let go. Um, and, and that really gets into Y five. Because uh, this, you know, there's a heavy vetting process. Have you been trained? You know? Because do we have students that are ready to go now? Or do we have students that need to incubate a little bit longer? It's not uncommon that we just might have students who just, just need to incubate a little longer before they're ready to go to the world that we employ. But um, this really does align with the big philosophical belief on our job here is to prepare students. And it's going to come up in our report for the graduate presentation and our current college readiness presentation uh, that we have in our future board meetings, is prepare students for life beyond high school. And that means are, are we everything, right? Like, are we ready for that complete handoff? So this really does align with that big philosophical move. And we just might have some students who just aren't quite there yet. Especially as philosophy moves in this quarter.
That's good stuff.
We did, speaking of apprenticeship, we were able to present today to the Washington State Teaching Certification Residence Model. And we'll be presenting the Professional Education Standards Board on May nineteenth. So today on, on launching a full registered, uh, registered apprenticeship that culminates in teaching certification. So thinking about much like manufacturing, but can we have apprentices? And that's already been approved on how the para-position, rethinking the para-position as an apprenticeship that culminates in teaching certification. And that's a presentation with maybe a state residency model for teaching cert. And we'll go to the Professional Education Standards Board, the governing agency in charge of teaching certification. And rethinking how paras relate to, how, rethinking teaching certification and how the para-position plays into. I think we've had a lot of, I mean, a lot of superintendent report programs coming up. I think we've had a lot of exciting things going on. We've had our TK positions, our Mark, have already been posted. Um, so we are about ready to announce hires, you know, for transitional kindergarten. Ready to announce, you know, so a lot of these pieces we've discussed are now all coming into place. So I'm pretty excited.
Um, do we know when, for that TK, when we're going to have um, an outreach to parents that are wanting to sign up?
I think soon, because I think Mark's going to be officially hiring a teacher here in the next day or two. Once we have a teacher in place, we'll be able to get really distorted announcements. But we want that to go in partnership with our early learning partners.
Sure.
So we're, we're down to dates.
Okay, all right. Um, I know that was kind of a long meeting, but it was all really wonderful things um, going on in Alma. We're going to go ahead and end our regular session to move to executive session. We'll be there twenty minutes-ish. No, twenty minutes.
We will be, we will be beginning at seven twenty-three. We'll be out at exactly seven forty-three.
Yes, uh, with no action taken. Have a good night. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Safe travels if you're heading back out of Alma.
Can I get your folder?
Yes.
I can. I will send that to you.
What day?
June twelfth at two o'clock in the middle school gym.
June twelfth. Thanks, June.
You're welcome. I will do that tomorrow morning. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm not ready to send invitations out, but I just want to know how many I need to make and stuff. So yeah. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
A second thought? And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned.